I'd like to call to order the Thursday, November 21st, 2024 Miami'sburg School Board Meeting. The district mission is to foster a positive, nurturing, and safe environment to inspire and support ongoing learning and the development of individuals as productive members of society. We must be able to conduct our meetings in an orderly fashion. Our expectation at all board meetings is that everyone conducts themselves civilly and respectfully. In the event anyone is disruptive and interferes with the meeting, they will be asked to leave. If they do not, we will request that law enforcement essence in the process. All right, let's stand for the pledge.
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ball call please. Mr. Anfler?
Here.
Mr. Daffler?
Here.
Ms. Getter?
Here.
Mr. Mowery?
Here.
East?
Here.
Mrs. McGowan?
Here.
Mrs. Ogbor?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Ms. Stocker?
Here.
Dr. Blessing is not in attendance. Mrs. Hiller?
Here.
Mr. Homan?
Here.
Next, we have C, the approval of the adoption of the agenda for November 21st, 24. D, approval of waiting the reading of the following minutes as presented. The regular board meeting held on Thursday, October 24th, 2024. The special board meeting work session held on Tuesday, November 19th, 2024. Then E, approval of minutes for regular board meeting held on October 24th, 2024, and special board meeting work sessions held on November 19th, 2024. And half, approval of the financial report, October 31st, 2024. And then now the good part, recognition of staff and students. And first, we have a recognition of staff members for the Miami'sburg Schools Education Foundation Education Excellence, Excellence Awards. Ms. Kathy Sperry here. Okay. All right. Well, first of all, we want to show you what will hang in each building. There will be one for the student and then one for the staff member. So these are just the examples. So can anybody like to come up and say anything when we call your name, please do. All right, we'll start out. Is Sarah Bucic here from Maddox Lane Primary? She was nominated by the student Peyton Walmeyer. Is Kathy Brown here from Bauer Elementary? She was nominated by Evelyn Williams. Do we have Courtney Christie from Bear Elementary? She was nominated by Javon Harris. Is Kristen Gaylor here? Want to come up? Because we want to get your picture.
Yeah, just stay standing too until all recipients have been called.
And her nominee was Amina, make sure, can you help me pronounce her name? Amina Cabarabo? Does that sound? Okay. And then next from Kinder Elementary, we have Jamie Frostborn. And she was nominated by Zoe Sischini. And then from Mark Twain Elementary, Allison Geere. Can you hear Allison? And she was nominated by Aura Painter. And then from Medlerview Elementary, we have Regina Wall. And she was nominated by Carmen Morales. And then from Mount Elementary, we have Glenda Mesta. Can you hear Glenda? And she was nominated by Elena Myers. From Miami'sburg Middle School, we have Stephanie Osborne. She's here. And she was nominated by Deandra Wychar. And then Miami'sburg High School, we have Megan Newton. And she was nominated by Mia McKeown.
Hey Kathy, do, can you come up to the podium here and give a little bit of background on the awards and all of our recipients and students? Yeah. And then also, if you're, the students who nominated, our staff members are here. If they can come up as well, next to the staff members, we want to get a picture of all of you guys together at the end here.
We just wanted, we just wanted to let people know.
Yes.
Thank you. I don't see this. We just wanted to let people know that we appreciate what they do every day. And when they do it exceptionally well, we wanted to, Miami'sburg Education Foundation Board, I'm sorry, Kathy Sperry, I'm the president of Miami'sburg Education Foundation Board. And we just wanted to create this award to honor the people that are working really hard every day and doing the best job out there and we want to recognize that. So thank you so much for what you do.
Oh, yes, yes. Do we have any other students here that nominated staff members?
How about this?
That keeps her keep being in the block.
Squeezing out every last second, Brenda.
Thank you guys very much.
All right. Kathy, just wanted to thank you for this new initiative. I think this is the first year and I think our staff is so deserving of this kind of recognition. Next, we have our district student of the month. And that is Andrew Prince from Miami'sburg High School, he's one of our student board reps.
The Miami'sburg Schools' October District Student of the Month is Miami'sburg High School student Andrew Prince. Andrew was nominated by his teachers Chris Fisher and Kathleen McGaughan. They said Andrew is one of our best students and strives to do his best every day. When topics are challenging for Andrew, he asks questions and works hard to improve his understanding. He is an excellent role model for other students because of his work ethic and respect for others. His demeanor never wavers and he is always pleasant, smiling, and caring. And I would agree with all those comments. Andrew never hesitates when there is an opportunity to help others, even if it causes him to step back from getting his own work completed more quickly. Andrew is great of getting involved in both our school and community. He is actively involved in Hope Squad, our peer tutor program, and Future Business Leaders of America. He is a Viking Mentor, Lieutenant Governor and Student Government, and Officer of Interact Club, Director of Outreach for Non-Local Profit Organizations, and he is a Miami'sburg Board of Education Student Representative. Congratulations, Mr. Prince.
Well deserved, buddy. You do do a great job. You've done a great job here while you've been here, all of you have. And it's good to see that you're getting recognition for it because it is a lot of time and there's a lot of effort. And I've seen you at the high school, you and Sophie both more so than anybody else since I've been here this week. And you guys are always doing stuff throughout the high school. So congratulations, well deserved.
Y'all have done a great job and I truly appreciate all your efforts and the fun things that you're doing. Next, we have a resolution of appreciation for a retiree. It is recommended that the Board of Education adopt the resolution of appreciation for the following employee, Brenda Hebert for 30 years. And Brenda, do you want to come up and read that petition?
Sure.
Brenda Hebert has rendered 30-year service to Miami'sburg City Schools and whereas Brenda Hebert's performance, conduct, and sincerity in carrying out her duty has exemplified the highest level of achievement. And whereas Brenda Hebert has distinguished herself as a playground aide, lunchroom aide, assistant to the treasurer, that was a job share, curriculum secretary, curriculum info tech, educational services and support, and administrative assistant to the superintendent in the Miami'sburg City School District. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Miami'sburg City Schools Board of Education pass this resolution as a token of its appreciation for her outstanding conduct and that such resolution become part of the permanent minutes of said Board of Education.
I just want to say a few things. I want to thank my son because he's the reason I got started working here in the first place. My husband, who dragged stuff around with me at every event and every party that we threw at this district, the 26 board members that I've worked with over the years, eight treasurers, six superintendents, four board reps, and all the people that I work with at the Central Office currently, who I love, I'm so proud of that team. Thank you for letting me be, let me grow, let me create, let me learn. I had a great time.
And I thank the board members.
Feel free to leave now. Your part of your honor, but it's not saying for us. You're done, or you're not. So feel free to leave.
Brenda, I don't know if you probably want to leave, but I thought maybe the board members might want to say some things to you. I know I do. I did. I'm sure others did too, because you're going to leave.
Yeah, I just wanted to, and if you others want to speak first, go ahead, but I just wanted to thank you for all your help and guidance this last seven years. I appreciate that you always answer my emails and my phone calls so promptly and, you know, you've done a great job helping me with the distance honor roll and technology. I appreciate that. I learned some cool things about Brenda. Her favorite thing is Halloween. I also learned that she is absolutely a phenomenal artist. I don't know if you all know that, but I've seen some of her pieces and they are, she's very gifted. And I just, she loves to hike and she has the best sense of humor as well. And I'm just going to miss you terribly.
Thanks. Well, I'm not going to.
Anyone else?
Just thank you in general. I think quite an unsung hero in the background, always making things work.
Don't worry, see you around tonight.
Yeah. He needs it.
And I got a great picture, Brenda, so he's mad.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Brenda. Over the years, I've been here 11 years now, and every time I walked in that office, you've always had a smile on your face. You've always answered any question that I've had. We've had good memories talking about Phoenix. I know you're going to be there before I get there. But I wish you 100% happiness and health in retirement and enjoy your retirement with Doug and the family. It's well deserved. You will be sorely missed. I know Regina will do a great job and, but you're never forgotten and always come back and see us.
I want to wish you the best. Brenda and I go way back, before I was even a school board member. We sat on bleachers in basketball, watching basketball games and baseball games, and I just wish you the best. It was wonderful when I came on board, on the school board, I knew that you were right there for me and I appreciate all your help as I got started last year. So best wishes.
I didn't have the privilege for knowing you as long as the other folks have, but I can tell you in the short term that I have, I've been absolutely impressed. You know, managing the multiple personalities that come and go throughout the district, that's incredibly challenging. And, you know, the one thing that sticks out in my mind is I still don't think I would have an Ohio Department job and family resources account if you didn't help me get that done because I was at an impasse for what it seemed like forever. But good luck in your retirement. I appreciate everything you've done. Well.
Well, I have to say something about you. So Brenda and I started about the same year. I think there's one year difference. And we have been through a lot of stuff over the years together.
A lot of different positions.
A lot of different positions. You know, she's worn different hats and she is truly a Viking, she's truly a friend.
You got to keep it on.
Next, we have, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve meeting opening item C through H. I know Katrina can speak to the financial report, but does the board have any questions?
I motion approve meeting opening item C through H.
Second. Okay, first by Mr. Mowery, second by Ms. Getter.
All right, I'm just going to do a quick recap here on your financial memo that you have in your board packets. In general, the district did see the expenditures were in excess of the revenue this month by $1.8 million. However, the district general fund is still functioning over on the black by $5.5 million. I did add some reports into your, you know, as we transitioned through this treasurer transition and what you guys wanted to see in your board reports, there's a document that you received, it's called a rolling plan. What that does, take every month and break things down so that you can see one vision of the numbers that have been functioning for that month. And if you look at the very end of that document, that's our bottom line that we've been trying to get to. So this will help us stay in line and kind of track how we're making progress towards that bottom line month by month basis. So it's just kind of everything on one page so you can reference that, along with our cash summary and some more of the board reports that you've been used to seeing.
Any questions? Ball call please. Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
Mr. Mowery?
Yes.
Mrs. East?
Yes.
Mr. Anfler?
Yes.
All right, next we'll come to our public comment section. Each person who wishes to address the board shall complete this form prior to the beginning of the meeting. The green form. Commenters will give his/her name and address. Each person is allotted three minutes to speak. The first 15 minutes only of public participation will be allotted for public comments concerning agenda items. An additional 15 minutes for discussion of other topics will provide a total time of 30 minutes for public comments. We will give a 30-second warning so speakers know when their three minutes is up. During public participation, each member of the public should direct their comments to the board as a whole. Consistent with our policy, this is not a time to question individual board members or district employees. As a reminder, our expectation tonight is that everyone conducts themselves civilly and respectfully. We will not tolerate profanity, frivolous, repetitive, or harassing statements. We do have one green sheet from Justin Chivitz. State your name and address.
My name is Justin Chivitz, 9310 Miami'sburg Spring Grove Road. All right. I want to provide a brief backstory to build context for my comments. I moved here with my three children four years ago from Kettering, the older two enrolled at Medler View. Please understand that I try to be as involved and aware about my children's lives as I can, including their educational experiences, and meet with them every day to ask questions and gain insight into their lives. Anyways, when I first moved here, red flags started jumping off right away. I was hearing all about these disruptions in class that were affecting my children's ability to focus and how the staff was approaching discipline at the school. One example was when I learned about a situation where a student basically threw a tantrum in the classroom. Instead of removing that child from the room, they had every other student move out of the room while they addressed the situation. Comments since would suggest that removing an entire class to deal with one problem child is not best practice. I reached out to the teachers, Ms. Woods, had a few discussions with them expressing my concerns, under the impression that these issues would be addressed, I let it go. Fast forward a few years, I got married and moved three more students into the district from Beaver Creek. Now my wife and I have students at every level of the district, from the elementary to the high school. I'm here today to shine light on some things that I've been hearing, coming mostly out of the middle school, once again raising red flags. We have students in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and it seems like these issues are common across all three grade levels. And I've talked to several other parents, teachers, and people in the community and learned that I am, that we are not the only ones with these concerns. We hear about students fighting almost every day. We just received a one call today about an epidemic sweeping the middle school of kids pulling down each other's pants. That is straight up sexual assault. That building is out of control. Schools are supposed to be preparing kids for the future, not looking for other ways to make excuses. After they graduate, this type of behavior is going to make them unemployable or land them behind bars. This time, I wanted to add to the lack of effective discipline procedures that interrupts instructions, but I also wanted to include the teacher design instruction time in the name of makeup time or work time. It's my understanding that this happens just about every class, every day. About 15, 10 or 15 minutes of wasted time for my students. My understanding is basically at the end of class periods, this is work time or makeup time for kids that are missing assignments that leaves the students, that have missing assignments, that leaves the students.
30 seconds.
Let me just get to the end. Board's role is to make policy, establish policies about discipline, school safety. The bottom line is that the accountability is on the board. I think that board members need to be in the schools. They need to have, and Dr. Blessing, I've talked to her, this is fine for board members to go into the schools. I think that you should be in the schools often and without giving warning to the administration that you're going to be in there. Not giving them time to prepare for someone who's observing, because in order to see the schools for what they really are, you know, you can't give them time to change what they're doing. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you, Mr. Chivitz. Next, we'll move on to board discussion. And tonight, we have with us Property Tax Collection Update by Don McManus, the Montgomery County Treasurer. Welcome.
Well, thank you very much. There we go. Thank you very much, everyone. Well, I am thrilled to be here. My name is John McManus, and I am proud to serve as the Montgomery County Treasurer. And with me, I have an outstanding member of our team at the Treasurer's Office, Missy May Walters. She's in charge of all of our communications and external affairs at the Treasurer's Office. And before I was elected Treasurer in 2020, I was a member of a school board myself. I was the member of the Dayton Board of Education for four years. And I know how hard of a job it is, not only to be a school board member, but God bless them, all of the members of staff, teachers, bus drivers, mechanics, food service workers, SROs, everybody else. And so, congratulations to all your awardees this evening. And it's great seeing student participation on the board. That's so important. So to the young folks here, good job. And thank you to board administrators for encouraging that. One of the, oh, by the way, this brought back a lot of good memories. This is like a very healthy agenda this evening. So I really remember that. And I told Missy, I said, oh, the then and now certificates, I missed those. I forgot all about that. So I remember those very well. So, but you know, I'm not here with too much of an agenda this evening, although I did bring some great informational resources for you that are both general to the community but also specific to your school district. But one of the things I like to do, and I've made a habit of doing this, is going to all of the different local government entities and their elected bodies throughout Montgomery County to say hello and introduce myself and staff and tell you a bit about what the office does. But also to meet with administrators. So I know, Missy, I think we were here probably about two or three years ago to meet with maybe some of the administrative leadership. Two years ago, great. And it was a, it was a great meeting. And so I'm thrilled for the opportunity to be here this evening to meet with the board. And so, board, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. So before I get into some of the general information that is specific to kind of how our office can help your constituents, I always like to bring by, when I can, some information that is specific to whichever local entity I'm in front of. So you'll see in the left-hand copy of, left-hand page of your packet, excuse me, are three pieces of paper that look like this. So I wanted to kind of show you some information that's specific to collection figures within the Miami'sburg School District. Now, you may see that number at the top, that, the $99 million figure, that is all taxes collected on parcels which are situated within the district. Obviously, not all of that is dedicated to the local school district, but you can see there in the chart, right below it, you can see the totals that have been collected and then the
Welcome.
Well, thank you very much. There we go. Thank you very much, everyone. Well, I am thrilled to be here. My name is John McManus, and I am proud to serve as the Montgomery County Treasurer. And with me, I have an outstanding member of our team at the Treasurer's Office, Missy May Walters. She's in charge of all of our communications and external affairs at the Treasurer's Office. And before I was elected Treasurer in 2020, I was a member of a school board myself. I was the member of the Dayton Board of Education for four years. And I know how hard of a job it is, not only to be a school board member, but God bless them, all of the members of staff, teachers, bus drivers, mechanics, food service workers, SROs, everybody else. So congratulations to all your boardies this evening. And it's great seeing student participation on the board. That's so important. So to the young folks here, good job, and thank you to board administrators for encouraging that. One of the, oh, by the way, this brought back a lot of good memories. This is like a very healthy agenda this evening. So I really remember that, and I told Missy, I said, "Oh, the then-and-now certificates. I miss those. I forgot all about that." So I remember those very well. So, but you know, I'm not here with too much of an agenda this evening, although I did bring some great informational resources for you. They're both general to the community, but also specific to your school district. But one of the things I like to do, and I've made a habit of doing this, is going to all of the different local government entities and their elected bodies throughout Montgomery County to say hello and introduce myself and staff and tell you a bit about what the office does. But also to meet with administrators. So I know, Missy, I think we were here probably about two or three years ago to meet with maybe some of the administrative leadership. Two years ago. Great. And it was a, it was a great meeting. And so I'm thrilled for the opportunity to be here this evening to meet with the board. And so, board, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. So before I get into some of the general information that is specific to kind of how our office can help your constituents, I always like to bring by, when I can, some information that is specific to whichever local entity I'm in front of. So you'll see in the left-hand copy of, left-hand page of your packet, excuse me, are three pieces of paper that look like this. So I wanted to kind of show you some information that's specific to collection figures within the Miami Springs School District. Now, you may see that number at the top, that, the $99 million figure, that is all taxes collected on parcels which are situated within the district. Obviously, not all of that is dedicated to the local school district, but you can see there in the chart, right below it, you can see the totals that have been collected and then distributed to the school district over the years. Obviously, you can see that this year was an increase, and this year is not over. We still have our biggest delinquent collection revenue event coming up, that being the annual tax lien sale. So you can expect that number to increase slightly as well. And then, of course, we included some information in there about parcels in the Miami Springs School District. And you can see that the number of taxable parcels is not the same as the number of total parcels. Obviously, there's a great many parcels throughout the county that are tax exempt. And then we categorize the parcels by type. Of course, no surprise, the vast majority of parcels in your school district are residential. And hats off to your taxpayers and your property owners because the delinquency rate in the Miami Springs School District is obviously very low. You can see there that the delinquent parcels that are situated within the Miami Springs School District represent not even 1.5% of the county's overall delinquency. So that is a real testament to your, to your property owners. And one of the things I'll talk about a little bit later, you'll see there why we put that in there, delinquency plans in the school district. That's really important for folks who may be experiencing some trouble meeting their financial obligations. I'll explain that, why it's important. And then a breakdown in terms of which parcels by type are delinquent. One thing that stood out to me at least, you'll see the delinquent residential and delinquent others. The delinquent other, which is commercial and industrial, is actually higher than residential parcels that are delinquent. So that, that wants me, that got me today, really wanting to dig into the numbers here in the school district to see if maybe there was a major commercial or residential or industrial property that may be falling behind, and maybe we could help get it back on track. The sheet, of course, on the back by color is just a nice wrap that we thought we would include that is with similar information that I just reviewed on the previous page. And this is very, very important to your school district in particular. I'm sure you have heard of the 20 mil floor, and you've probably educated yourself on it. If you haven't, I would highly recommend that you do. And this information, I'm very grateful to the auditor's office because they provided this information that you see here on this page. Because, and I definitely made sure to say this ad nauseam during election year this year. The county treasurer does not set the taxable rate, nor the amount to be collected on each parcel, nor the value of the property. That is all done by the county auditor. But, so the county auditor has a lot of really good information to kind of drill down into what factors lead to a particular amount to be collected per parcel. So why I brought this for you is because it's important for the Miami Springs City School District. This school district was the first district in this county to reach the 20 mil floor, and that happened last year. So now that this school district has reached the 20 mil floor, since that time, we've had two other school districts reach the 20 mil floor, that being Valley View and New Lebanon. It is a very, very important provision in the Ohio Revised Code that, and you can see some details there, that has some pretty profound implications when it comes to property taxes and revenue to be collected. So I would encourage you to take a, take a look at what's on that sheet there, just kind of familiarize yourself with it. But, because it is very, very important, and this school district was the first to reach that mark. Before I move forward on some of the general information, are there any questions thus far that I can answer? Okay, all right. Well, seeing none. So one of the reasons I really like to come by too is because, obviously, as the county's, the county treasurer in each county has three main functions. Number one, to serve as the county's banker. Number two, to serve as the county's investment officer. Number three, to serve as the county's property tax collector. And what a lot of folks don't know is that 60%, 6-0% of every property tax dollar collected is then earmarked to be distributed to that taxpayer's local school district. And that's a really kind of critical piece that we try educating taxpayers on all the time. They really want to know, hey, where can I go to learn about where my tax dollars are going? And that's a really important thing for all of our constituents. There are obviously a lot of great ways you can do that. You can look on your property tax bill, or you can go on the auditor's website as well to see that breakdown. One thing I would encourage everybody to do, whether here or listening, is to go to the auditor's website. Put in your property, your parcel ID, you can search it by a number of factors, and then click on the breakdown on the left-hand side. You can see where every single cent, you know, goes that is collected on your, on your property. So I've included a couple of other things kind of in the packet for you. Number one, especially as elected officials, you know, one of the things that I started when I took office in '21 was doing a report to the community. And you, as elected officials, you likely have received this in the mail before, but it's just showing you kind of the performance at the office. And I would encourage you to go through this and take a look. And by the way, there on page six is kind of a general breakdown of where all the property taxes go. Obviously, that is, that changes a little bit year to year, but you can see, obviously, the large 60% figure there is the local school district. And then it kind of goes through some other things that the office does. It's really important. You know, one of the things that I've really focused on is, and we've had a lot of great success. We've collected about $130 million, well, by the end of this year, we would have collected $130 million in delinquent taxes. Obviously, those delinquent taxes, and some of them have just been delinquent for years and years and years. But, you know, those, those delinquent taxes are critical for local entities that are relying on these dollars. And obviously, you know, in my opinion, the collection of delinquent taxes is also about fairness. And if you have people who are paying their taxes year after year, each and every county treasurer has the obligation to go after, you know, those taxes that maybe haven't been paid in a while because that's what's fair to everybody. So I'd encourage you to look at those totals as well. So a couple of the things, whenever I come and speak with local governments, that I always try and encourage. You know, and one thing I think that's important to note, you know, Ohio, right now, there is a great deal of focus, a great deal of focus on property taxes and the laws that govern, not only the collection of taxes, but the laws that govern property taxes, how they're calculated in general, things of that nature. Huge focus in Columbus as we speak. And by the way, a lot of, a lot of the proposed pieces of legislation do and would impact the 20 mil floor. So since you're there, again, I would recommend that you take a look at that. But you know, one of the things that I have really tried to focus on is making it easier, easier for our constituents to pay their property tax obligations. Obviously, property taxes are not an inexpensive venture for everybody. And in my opinion, what's one of the best ways that we can help people, not only this county, but every county, pay their bills in an easier fashion, that's easier to manage, and that's good for all the local entities that are relying on those dollars? And that is to allow residents to break up their payments from not just one or two payments, but break it down into 12 payments. So this is a, this is kind of a, we changed some of the language on this, but this is one of our older copies. But Montgomery County is actually a leader in something known as prepayment. And we have treasurers from other parts of the state who come to Montgomery County to ask, you know, kind of how we administer this program. So I'd really encourage you to speak with your constituents if they're ever saying, hey, you know, these property taxes, they're rough. What can I do? Well, they can sign up for our prepayment program. It is totally free, and it is a program entirely administered by the Treasurer's Office where we set the taxpayer up to have their payment broken down into six payments for the first half and six payments for the second half. It can be done electronically, so through an EFT, or they can send in checks in the mail. But we give them specified dates, and we break that payment down into monthly obligations. And this prepayment program has just taken off exponentially, faster than we ever thought it would. We have shopped this program, not only to residential property owners, but also to commercial property owners, and we have seen great success. So one thing I would encourage you to do, again, if you have a constituent who is not too happy about property tax obligation and wants to know, hey, what can I do now to maybe make it a little bit easier on myself or a loved one? Get them to take a look at, at the prepayment option. And so that is kind of a payment plan, if you will. But another payment plan that I really wanted to tell you about as well, that is of critical importance to folks who may be experiencing difficulty paying their property taxes, is the page behind it, the Delinquent Contract. If somebody is tax delinquent, the best thing that he or she can do in order to protect their home from a foreclosure or a tax lien is to enroll in one of these delinquency payment plans with our office. But they gotta be on the plan if they, if they want to protect their property from those enforcement actions. That is a plan where we set them up, we do require down payment, then we set them up month to month with payments in order to get them back on track. So please, if you have a constituent who's having trouble paying their bills, and one of those bills are property taxes, please tell them, don't ignore it. Go down to the Treasurer's Office. I'm going to leave you with my cards so that you have a way to get in touch with Missy or I. We'd be happy to reach out to your constituent personally and try and help them through, if there are any challenges they may be facing. And there are two others, the two other programs I wanted to tell you about, and I left you some information in here. We usually tell city councils about these, but I thought it would be good to share with you as well. And one of the things that each county treasurer does, and for any of the students who may be wanting to go into government yourself one day or into elected office, there's, I've been in government all my life, there are parts of the job that are absolutely incredible and fulfilling. And then there are parts of the job that we like to say are difficult but necessary sometimes. And the difficult but necessary job of a county treasurer at times is the necessity to foreclose on property. And that's where there is a debt associated with a parcel, and then we have to auction off that debt, or auction off that parcel in order to pay that debt. And so that can be difficult, but it can also be really, it's an important power under statute, especially for local cities, township, school districts, who are requiring on revenue to be generated by these parcels, especially where a property is vacant or abandoned. Now, you're fortunate here in Miami Springs to really not have a lot of issues with vacancy or abandonment. But one thing I would encourage you to do is, you know, maybe work with your city council members or, you know, your counterparts on the Township Board of Trustees. If there, and you know your community best, if there is a parcel in one of your neighborhoods, whether it be residential, industrial, or commercial, that is abandoned or neglected, I would encourage you to reach out to our office because county treasurers may, assuming that the parcel meets certain criteria, take that parcel through what is known as an expedited foreclosure through the County Board of Revision. That process then obviously changes ownership back to the city for a time being, or the land bank. And that parcel can then be transferred into responsible hands, ideally to be fixed up, transformed, and then begin once again generating property tax revenue of which you are the primary beneficiary of said revenue. We work with local cities, townships, and others all day long on properties that may be a problem, but if that problem was addressed, they could be brought back to good standing, not be an eyesore anymore, not be a health risk, and could, of course, again, begin generating revenue once more. And also, as county treasurer, I also serve as a member of the Board of Directors on the Montgomery County Land Bank. Obviously, that is a crucial body for, to help local governments and other, you know, local entities. If you ever need any assistance from the land bank, please don't hesitate to call. But overall, one thing I just want to leave you with is, I pride myself in my office on, and it's primarily Missy's job, it was half of her job, is to have great working relationships with our local elected officials, local governments, and to be there for you as a resource. And so if there is ever an issue that, where you need information, where you have a constituent who's in need of services or programs, I want you to know that our office is happy, happy to work with you, to get you information or any services that you or your district or your constituents may need. And just know that it is, it's an honor to serve as the county treasurer, to serve your constituents and this board and all of the children and families of the Miami Springs City School District. And I thank you all for what you do. And so if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer, but I hope at least you enjoy the reading material, and I hope you get something from it.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks for taking the time to come down.
Absolutely.
One question.
Please, yes.
Do you, it may be right up your alley.
I hope.
I'm trying to understand the different levies that schools can allow.
Yes.
So with your experience in the Treasurer's Office and your experience in the school environment, why are subs, why are emergency levies often described internally as a school's not an emergency?
It's a great question. And there's actually legislation right now to address emergency levies. And I, it's a very complicated topic, and I hope you don't mind if I follow up with you with some information, but the topic of levies, and even as you can see, you know, the levies that are on your, on your sheet right now, you know, some of them are in excess of 40 years old. You know, that's, that's one of the things I think that constituents, I say our constituents, I used to be a school board member, but are quite frankly surprised to see the number of levies that are still generating revenue on their parcels all these years later. And so whether it's, you know, original operating, whether it's, whether it's bond, whether it's an emergency, it gets really, really complicated and tough for people to understand. But I'd be, I'd be more than happy to follow up with you with some detail. Absolutely. Mr. Mallory, thank you. All right, everybody. Well, thank you so much for your opportunity, and good luck to you, and thanks for what you do, very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have our Board of Education Student Representative Presentation.
So this presentation is about our elementary students' feedback for quarter one. Also, coming onto the board, my fellow student reps and I all had the same goals, consisting of providing the board with student perspectives and insights, and to give voices to all students within the district. Oftentimes, though, the voices of elementary school students are overlooked and not considered. They are just as important demographic as a middle schooler or high schooler within the district. So my fellow board reps and I decided to meet with elementary students because they offer our board valuable, a valuable opportunity to gain insights into their school experiences, perspectives, and ideas, which would all differ from that of... perspectives, and ideas, which would all differ from that of a high schooler or middle schooler. Engaging directly with students allows board members to understand their needs better, celebrate their achievements, and identify areas for improvement in a meaningful and impactful way. By fostering an open and supportive environment, these feedback sessions ensure that students feel heard and respected as essential contributors to shaping programs that directly affect their education and growth.
So, the first thing that we wanted, the first thing that we wanted to do was meet with all of the principals to see what exactly they were looking for. So, we met with all of the intermediate principals over the summer, and also the Bauer principal. Unfortunately, we were not able to hit all of the primary schools, but we are hoping to do that next semester, or, sorry, next semester, next quarter. But we wanted to brainstorm with them what activities they were looking for us to do, and what questions they wanted us to ask. We also wanted to get insight about what we planned on giving with them with the information that we received, and how we wanted to share that with the board. So, disclaimer wise, all the data we have presented here is approximate because of a few reasons. So, there's a short list here. Students change their positions after the counting process begun. So, after we asked some questions, kids were still like walking around, talking to their friends, so that's something we have to take into consideration when presenting these results. Another thing we noticed is some of the students had a language barrier, and that's something we had to address. That's something we also plan to look into in the future. As a student rep, it's something that caught our attention, and we definitely want to look into more. So, students going with their friends, some students did sit out a very small amount, and we also considered students that might have been absent on the days we attended these schools. And then, lastly, we are continuously refining and improving our approach. We are currently working out plans on how we're going to approach the survey in a better way in the future, and this coming second quarter. And I just want to say, the kids did a great job, and we really enjoyed meeting with them.
Okay, so I'm gonna start out with our first question. We, I'm gonna do the intermediate schools first, that information, so that would be Kinder, Mound, and Jane Chance. Altogether, we had about 300 to 400 kids, give or take. We don't know the exact number right now, because it's percentages, but our first question was, if you switched schools, how did you feel? How did that make you feel? And I'm gonna start with third grade. So, third grade had the highest rate of happiness. Most of them felt happy that they were switching. Something that I noticed was about the no switch rates for each grade was about the same, so that's pretty consistent. About 18% of them were nervous, 19% were happy, and 12% was chill, that was the lowest one. So, when we say chill, we mean it didn't really affect them, they don't really, it didn't really like care, they don't really care about it. And then, about 16% felt sad slash angry, and I actually had that group, and a lot of the responses when they said they felt sad were, I'm away from my sibling, or I just don't like, I didn't like switching to a new school, or something like that. But majority of them were, they got split up from a sibling, which makes sense. Fourth grade, about the no switch rate was 35%, so about the same as third grade. They had the highest sad or angry rate, and again, a lot of those were, I am getting switched from, like, away from my sibling, or something like that. And then, they also had a high nervous rate, and you could see in the trends, third grade to fifth grade, the nervous rate goes up, and that kind of didn't make sense to me, because you would think that third grade would be more nervous because they're younger, but I guess the fifth graders really didn't want to move away from their building on their last year, so that kind of made sense. And fourth grade was about similar rates. They had a pretty okay, they had the lowest chill rate, so a lot of them, not a lot of them didn't care. And then, fifth grade, they had about pretty even stuff, except for sad and happy. So, they had the highest chill rate, a lot of the fifth graders didn't care, but they also had about the same of a nervous rate. So, just have to take that into account. And then, they had the least sad slash angry rate, and then they had also the least happy rate. And that was our first question.
Do you mind just explaining how you did the survey?
Oh, yeah, of course. Sorry.
No, that's how you got it. I know that I was there, and I know they weren't, so I thought that might be helpful.
Yeah, of course. I don't know how we even think about that. So, we decided to do a four corners activity, and what happened was, we used the gyms at the schools, and we would call about two to three classes in from each grade, we did all the grades, by the way, every class in the school got, like, survey, sorry, lost my words. And we would do about two to three from each grade level, just so it wasn't a lot, and that's about 60 kids probably, and we just did a four corners activity with them. So, one of us would stand in the middle, we'd say, if you felt sad, go to this corner. If you felt angry, I mean, if you felt chill, go to this corner, so on and so forth. And there is some pull with that, with people going to their friends, and it was sometimes a little challenging to get some of the kids to listen, especially at the younger ages, but everyone did pretty good with it, and that's kind of how we got our data. And like Sosa said, and like everyone else said, we are kind of rethinking that, so we don't have as much of a pull towards the friends and kind of that bias. So, that was how we collected our data.
So, question two, we asked them what their favorite special was, and I know you're probably thinking, what does this have to do with anything we just did in question one? But when we met with the principals over the summer, we decided we used this first round as like a pilot questionnaire, survey. So, the first question was the data we really wanted to extract, because we thought it was most important to how the elementary school students were going to do throughout the school year. These ones were more pilot questions, and it was a way for them to get to know us and for us to get to know them. So, I'm not gonna spend too much time over the statistics here. I would just point out that over, at least half of almost every grade enjoyed gym the most. That tracks, because that was my favorite subject in elementary school, too. And consistently, using the library, we're at the bottom.
And going on to our next question, it was, what is your favorite thing to do at recess? We had the most participation with the kids, starting with third grade. Most of them liked sports with a 37.4% in the least being playground. Same with fourth, with fourth grade, 42.7% of fourth graders liked to hang out with their friends, while 7% liked to play in the playground. And finally, for fifth grade, we had 42.1% to hang out with friends, just beating sports by just a little bit, and then continuously playground at the lowest with 6%. All right, so next up, we're looking into our data we got from the primary schools. The only primary school we visited was Bauer, so all the data we have presented here is only from Bauer. So, the first question we asked at all the schools was, if you switched schools, how did you feel? So, obviously, we didn't ask kindergarten this question, because they didn't switch schools, they started schools for the first time. They all seemed pretty excited to be there, so that was good. For our first graders, it's the same trends, honestly, for no switch, which was good. And then, so the largest percentage we had was nervous, which is understandable for the kids, and it's nice that we know that. And I also think it's a good trend that our lowest percentage was sad or angry. Moving on to the second graders, their smallest percentage was chill, and following sad and angry. And with such a small sample size, because we only went to Bauer, I think that difference might have been like a few kids, like three or four kids, and then their biggest feeling was nervous, which tracks, so, yeah. Also, for Bauer, comparing this data to the intermediate schools, a large percentage of the kids did feel nervous, and, yeah.
So, again, our second question was, what is your favorite special? And I would say kindergarten and second grade definitely were different from first grade. First grade was similar to our intermediate schools, where gym was their favorite, then everything else was around similar things. Kindergarten had the highest percentage of art, and second grade also had art pretty high, higher than the intermediate schools. Then, along with music, steam, and library, they had about the same, those were equal, and gym for kindergarten was not a very big favorite, it was about 24, so hopefully they'll like gym when they're older. But, again, with first grade, about library and steam were about the same, music was the lowest one, and then we had art at 20%, and then again, gym was half of that. So, they definitely liked gym, and then second grade was music, steam were about the same, nope, I'm sorry, library and steam were about the same, music was the lowest out of all of this, and then art was pretty large, and then gym had that large percentage, about five more percent than art. But pretty similar trends for the intermediate schools, I mean, primary schools.
So, looking at the last question, it is, again, what is your favorite thing to do at recess? This surprised, these statistics surprised me the most. Kindergarten, their highest was sports. I thought that it was gonna be playing on the playground, but times have changed with their lowest being hanging out with friends. For first grade, their highest is hanging out with friends, and their lowest is sports. And then, for second grade, their highest, which definitely shocked me the most, is playing on the playground, while their lowest is other. And I just, I did want to point out the other. They have soccer ball, if they liked reading, writing, drawing, anything else that wasn't necessarily with friends or sports or playing on the playground, that went to that category.
Okay, on to the pros, cons, and continuations. The first column there is the pros. For the first bullet point here, I can specifically speak to this. The kids were excited to see SBA positive feedback. I had great conversations with all the students who came to my corner. I had library for one of mine, so I oftentimes asked them what their favorite book was, and that was a really great way for me to get to know them. Even better, I volunteer at Kinder on Friday, or, I'm sorry, on Wednesdays for their after school program, and I walked in, and I had about four students come up to me and say, Andrew, you're here. And that was really cool to be a part of there. Like, we've already stated, most students actively participated. I don't know why they wouldn't, they got out of class, they got to play four corners, and we did offer them a Starburst afterwards for their participation.
Right.
Yeah. And that's the handing out candy was a hit with the kids. It did establish familiarity and a bond, I can connect that to the first bullet point there. And our sessions did run smoothly, we didn't really have too much overlap with classes getting crowded in the gym and whatnot. So, for some cons, some students seemed distracted. I could assume this is probably from all their friends being this loud, echoey gym, and maybe they couldn't hear us, stimulus was everywhere. The translation thing, we didn't see a lot, but we did see a little bit, and that kind of skewered our data a little bit, because it took some time to make sure those students understood what we were trying to ask them. Many kids in a small space, leading increased volume, the gyms were pretty echoey, so it was a little loud. I would say the one that we thought of the most, and the ones we talked to the principals the most, was the taking away the instructional time. That one was really important for us, because we're not here to try and take kids out of class and instructional time. So, I mean, we applaud the principals for doing what they could to get away from taking the kids out of the instructional time in the best they could for them. And of course, we do miss a little bit of school. I wouldn't say it was hard to catch back up to the classes we missed. I had wait training in period, so, but Sofia has AP government, so of course, her workload she has to make up is gonna be a little bit more than my workload. Lastly, some continuations. We are revisiting our approach to students. We realized it was very taxing on the principals to try and get all the teachers on board, and since they run on the A, B, C, D, E schedules, every day is different for them, so it definitely took a lot of preparation there, so we're gonna revisit it to make it easier on everyone. We love to keep the trends of feedback from the teachers and principals that we were receiving. It was mostly good stuff, so that was great. We have already some dates in place for December, March, and May. We still have to, of course, reach out to those three remaining primary schools that we didn't get to. Yesterday, and for this second last bullet point here, we, some of us went to a meeting with some other, what was it? Mrs. K, do you think you?
Teaching and learning.
Yeah, teaching and learning, student ownership committee meeting, thank you. And Mrs. Thomas, and, oh, no, Ms. Thomas was there, and we talked to Ms. Thomas a little bit about possibly doing some after-school student focus groups. So, that's where that connection with the secondary education comes in. And then, we'll compare, and hopefully, at the end of the school year, have the final, final presentation where we can provide all the statistics from the years forward, and of course, the principals, and any educator if you'd like. So, any questions?
I have a question. Is it safe to say that no switch and chill are relatively the same feeling? Just to look, I mean, when I look at that, really, it had 50% of the most, you know, the questions are grades. There was really no feeling one way or the other. If those are similar, it seems like they are similar, or switch and chill is about the same emotion, I'm guessing?
Well, was no switch, that means they didn't actually experience a school switch?
Yeah, oh, okay, yeah. So, you don't have a feeling at all? Okay.
I was thinking, I was thinking, I'll say, but their feelings didn't change. That's what I was saying.
Yeah, that was, that was kind of tricky, getting the kids to understand what you were saying, but you forgot it.
That first question was definitely a learning curve. Very much a learning curve. I think we changed the format of the question after groups I came in. So, yeah, that was, that was interesting, trying to tell, ask the kids what we were trying to ask, because it was very much so adult terms, and probably stuff they wouldn't have understood, so.
Thank you for doing this, I think it's great to be able to use you guys as a tool, because I think younger kids will relate and open up to other students much more than they would have adult. You guys would be able to answer this for me better than most, I mean, I would expect some nervousness. How soon from the beginning of the school was your survey taken? Had they been there for a month, two months?
It was right before fall break, so the week before.
So, they'd been there for?
Yeah, they had, there was an adjusting period where they could get used to the new building if they had switched.
Yeah. I mean, being the attitude, I mean, nervous is somewhat, but would you say that the nervousness was normal?
I would, yeah. Especially for the students who switched, too, that's a big change, and so, nervous was actually a statistic I thought was gonna be the highest, but it wasn't, so, I mean, I would have been a little bit more nervous than they were, but that, yeah, yeah.
Did any of the students elaborate on the sad and angry feedback at all? Pretty strong.
A couple of them did, I had sad and angry for most of the days. I think Mrs. Nice was there at Mound, and I remember you asking, she also asked some questions. Most of them were sad that they got split up from a sibling. I would say most of that was about fourth and fifth grade. I heard a lot of siblings getting split up, which they obviously did not want to happen, and that was the main thing I heard. I didn't really hear anything else, just, I think one student said something, how they didn't want to switch their schools, which was understandable, but that, the main thing was getting split up from a sibling.
Did they do the U.S. medal booth at all?
Not at all.
No? No. I'm sure some of those students had missed having their older students in the same building with them, did they peer up to mentor, have them walk, help, walk around, and then get lost? But thank you.
Thank you. I loved your visuals, these are really easy on the eye, and, yeah, great job with this presentation. Thank you.
And your presentation, how you walked into a building, and the little guys that came up to, and how excited they were, and know that you were there, just hold that dear, because that means the world to those little kids.
Andrew, was the biggest challenge that you've seen so far, is the language that you weren't anticipating that you were going to hit, or?
It was definitely not something we took into consideration. It was definitely not something we took into consideration.
Okay.
We were lucky that there were teachers willing to be there with us and they had a translator and they were able, we were able to prove that the question enough to them and translate over and after them to the other, of the, of the students who spoke another language so they could answer the question. But, um, after the groups had finished the survey, we sat in the middle and we had them ask questions about whatever they wanted and, um, we couldn't ask them because they, we couldn't see the que, or understand the questions they were asking us. So it's definitely something we didn't take into consideration. Um, so it's something we are going to think about on the, with our new plan.
And that was brought up yesterday, um, at the teaching and learning committee that our non-English speaking student population is continuing to grow daily. That's really significant at this time. And so the students are going into a school where they don't speak the language. I can't imagine going to Greece or Portugal or somewhere and being plopped into a school where I couldn't speak the language. And, um, I volunteer at Jane Chance and I know there are several students there that are non-English speaking. And a lot of times they'll use another student who's bilingual to help interpret for them.
I think it also goes to show how much of an impact, I mean, you said it perfectly. As you walked into Kinder School, you had four kids come up to you. How much of an impact that all of you have, not just yourselves, uh, but other individuals as well? How much you're looked up to, uh, and how much that you giving back to the elementary schools or the intermediate schools or whatever. You're seeing things in a completely different light because of the opportunity that you four sit each month. You're, you're learning so much so quick. And I think all four of you have done a fabulous job, so congratulations.
Thank you.
That's really great, Andrew, about you helping with the after school program. The thing I noticed because I volunteered at the after school program a couple of times over at Mound and at Kinder once, I helped out. And the kids are tired by that time of the day. So I know they look forward to a guy coming because it's usually a girl or some ladies running the program. Not that they don't like the ladies, but, yeah, there's a lot of boys usually in the program and I bet they just.
Oh, yeah, they were definitely getting, getting guy got balls, so I was definitely incorporating.
Yeah, you're gonna be so popular, yeah. Well, thank you. Any other questions? I will move on to the consent agenda. We have A, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following overnight extended student trips. I T L Lisa, Myhamsburg, M V C T C National Future Farmers of America Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana. And B is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following out of state travel and/or overnight student trips. Myhamsburg, M V C T C National Future Farmers of America Convention, Indianapolis, Indiana. C, Michael Black, Principal, uh, Myhamsburg High School has recommended Caitlin Fraser, early graduation pending satisfactory completion of all state and local requirements. And D is recommended by the Superintendent to approve the consolidated school report nutrition services 2024 compliance report. And E, the Board of Education recommends Kelly Lee Marker and Shannon Rupert to serve on the Myhamsburg Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a two-year term. One, one, twenty-five to twelve, thirty-one, two thousand, twenty-six. And then F, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve consent agenda items A through E. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval of consent items A, Alpha through E, Echo.
Sorry.
And the first by Mr. Hamslar, second by Mr. Dackler. And then, um, Mr. Hellman, would you like to talk about any of this?
Yeah, A, B and C, those would be normal business items that we have. D were required, um, every time this time of the year to submit our nutrition services report. You know, we receive, um, government funding for our frame reduced lunch program. And so we have to be able to submit the report that we've met all the standards and that we're meeting, um, all the requirements. So that's that report. And then the Parks and Rec Board, that is something where we have, um, uh, two principals that serve on that term, um, every two years in terms of that. And, um, both Kelly and, and Shams ended for a number of years. It's really beneficial because that helps us redo our summer camp programs to have them there. And, and it really helps a lot of our kids in the summertime to be able to promote that.
Any questions? Okay, roll call please, Mrs. Gettler? Yes, Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice? Yes. Mr. Dackler?
Yes.
Mr. Dackler?
Yes.
Next we'll move on to human resources, the agenda items. And A is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports. Employment in the Myhamsburg City School District is contingent on the candidate submitting to and passing a B C I I and FBI criminal record check in accordance with Ohio revised code and pre-employment drug screening in accordance with adopted board policies. Do I have a motion?
I motion to approve the personnel reports for certificated and classified.
Second. All right, first by Mr. Mallory, second by Mrs. Gettler. Any questions? Mr. Hellman, you want to say anything about that? That's pretty standard.
Daydreamed stuff.
Yeah.
Rinse and repeat each month, so.
Any questions? Roll call please. Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice? Yes. Mr. Dackler?
Yes.
Mr. Dackler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettler?
Yes.
And next we have B, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports, certificated, classified, supplemental, stipend. And then that same clause. Mr. Hellman, um, do I have a motion?
No, I move to, uh, approve the following personnel report, certificated, classified, supplemental, stipend.
Second.
Sorry.
Uh, first by Mrs. Gettler, second by Mr. Hamslar. Mr. Hellman, just same old standard, okay. Any questions?
I wanted to say thank you. You worked very hard with Jason, Jason. Um, I want to say thank you for everything that you did. That was much needed and, um, I appreciate it, so thank you.
Yeah, that was done quickly, thank you.
Very much.
Roll call please. Mrs. Nice? Yes. Mr. Dackler?
Yes.
Mr. Dackler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettler?
Yes.
And Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Uh, next we move on to agreements and contracts. A, the Superintendent Treasurer CFO recommend approval of the attached agreement with the Warren County Educational Service Center for Student Services at the W C E S C Learning Center.
I'm going to speak to that for a second just in case. It was the very end of the day and Katie called me with my access to update to board docs to replace what was on there. It was, I think it had an end date of 2025, but it's actually supposed to be 26. So there's a new copy in there that reflects 26, that's all.
And then B, the Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approves the Career Navigator twenty days agreement and the Cartwheel Health Services Agreement with the Montgomery County Educational Service Center for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented. C, the Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approves the agreement with Endeavor Speech Therapy LLC for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented. And D is recommended that the Board of Education approve the agreements and contracts, items A through C. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve agreements and contracts, items A through C. Second.
Was that you, Mr. Dackler?
Yeah.
Uh, first by Mr. Mallory, second by Mr. Dackler. All right, and Mr. Hellman?
Yeah, so the first item with the Warren County, that is for, um, a student that moved into the district that was, uh, already signed to an alternative educational placement. And so we have to, um, continue that education there in terms of that. The one from Montgomery County, there are two of them on there. The first one is the Career Navigator. So that Career Navigator, um, um, is partially being funded with our title money. And I know a couple of you are involved in the career explorations and that coming up where, um, kids have an opportunity to see what careers are out there. And so Katie, uh, Gross House, uh, with Montgomery County S C has been very instrumental in making sure that we're providing opportunities, um, for our kids to know what other, uh, things are out there besides going to a two or four-year college to do that. Um, so, um, the funding, um, was available for twenty days and then we're using the other twenty days out of the title money for that. And then, um, Cartwheel, Cartwheel, um, is mental health services. Um, for those that are on a tier-three mental health that has a little more severe, um, issues to be addressed. Um, and that is being part of our success in wellnessment that has to be allocated and used for, um, those mental health services. Now, what we did, did do, do did, did do, is to.
You did?
You did. Uh, is, uh, the previous contract was for seventy-five thousand. And then we, we lowered that because we did not need all those, um, spots in there. So this one is about, I think, thirty-nine thousand. So money's being used for that. And then, um, the last one with the speech services with Endeavor Speech, um, we have had, um, an increase in the amount of students at our primary level in terms of being able to have interventions with speech. And those tick up. It's, those interventions are used prior to the team deciding if that student needs to be evaluated for speech services. And so, um, we have a lot of primary kiddos coming up that are having, need some intense interventions for that. So this is enough to kind of be, to, um, even out the caseloads because the speech pathologists don't have. With the number of students they're servicing on I E Ps, they wouldn't have time in order to provide these interventions.
So it bridges the gap.
It bridges the gap, yeah.
Any questions?
Just while we're on the topic of speech, do we have enough translators?
The, the translators are all, um, are dependent upon, we, we have ESL coordinators.
Turn it off.
Yeah. That's okay. The, uh, we have ESL coordinators that work with our students. Uh, English is a second language. And so, in, in terms of, it's not so much translators, but they work with students to help better understand, uh, how to make those bridges from their language into our language and tools that they can use to do that. Now, in terms of when we get to translators, when they go to take state tests and things like that, then we have specific, they can have tests in their specific language. So there's no barrier for them.
Right. Is there one that flows that we can free up to help these guys go with them so that, is that easy enough to do?
Well, a lot of these may not necessarily be, when we talk about speech, these would be interventions in terms of how they're forming letter sounds and things like that. Not necessarily, um, language and native language, guys like that.
Okay.
Anyone else? All right, roll call please. Mr. Dackler?
Yes.
Mr. Dackler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettler?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to financial agenda items. A is recommended by the Treasurer CFO that the appropriations and certificate of estimated resources be amended as listed in the attached reports. And B is recommended that the Board of Education approve that fiscal year twenty-five, two-hundred fund purpose and policy statement as presented. C, the Treasurer CFO is hereby authorized to request advances on twenty-twenty-four tax settlements from the county auditor. D is recommended that the Board of Education approve the fiscal year November two thousand twenty-four five-year forecast as submitted to the Ohio Department of Education. E is recommended that the Board of Education approve the then and now invoices, Pacific Plumbing Specialties, three thousand one hundred and seven dollars. And F is recommended that the Board of Education approve financial items A through E. A motion please?
I motion to approve financial items A through E.
Second. All right, so first by Mr. Mallory, a second by Mrs. Gettler and, uh, Mrs. Hillier.
All right, so item A is the amendment for appropriations certificate of estimated resources. That is the standard procedure that we're doing monthly, so those are just the updated versions. The FY twenty-five budget and purpose policy statement, that's the future business leaders of America they want to return to functioning again. So we need to establish that fund back. And with that comes the process of doing that purpose policy statement so that we can regulate those funds and get them going. C is the authorization to, to request the advance of tax settlements. The, the tax elements will not come, or the tax advances will not come. We do not submit this request for them to, so that's just compliance to make sure we can receive those. D is the approval of the five-year forecast along with the assumptions that are, um, tagged into the agenda for that. Just for the public record, we did have about a two and a half hour work session where we elaborated on the five-year forecast as well as some other financial issues. So we, we've covered that, but need to make sure that we get it on the agenda. E is approval of the then and now. That's just a regular then and now where that three thousand one oh seven was over the three thousand mark that it had missed a P O prior to being serviced or purchased. So that's just a compliance with the then and nows. Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions other than just make a comment that the community should know that since you came on, you know, that this, um, financial forecast that you provided, you did a great job with it. I told you that the other night. Um, it always leads to some more questions, which is natural. Um, but you did a good job presenting it in a way that was easy for a layman like myself to understand and track and kind of helped define for me where I want to pay closer attention to. And I appreciate your work.
Absolutely.
I knew she had a question.
Yeah.
I know, it's crazy. So I'm Vice President for Future Businesses, Leaders of America.
Yeah.
And, uh, just came up a few weeks ago in a discussion about how we can't enter, uh, this conference because of this certain situation by, you guys admitting this, would this allow us, after we pay our dues, to become like fully pledged as like a branch or a, uh, as a Myhamsburg branch? Or what does that entail exactly?
Are you talking about your future business of America?
Yeah.
So once, so for my, for the financial pieces of this, this is just so we can establish the use of the fund. And so that when you guys are doing anything you sell or that goes in and out or you purchases, that fund is intact and we have a plan for where those dollars are coming and going. So that's, that's what this is doing for that. Um, I would get with your leader, whoever's leading that, and right, that staff member that's leading you guys on and ask about the actual club itself. I'm not sure about that.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry buddy.
Thank you.
With each question comes a fee. Kidding.
Katrina, I'll just echo what, um, Jason was talking about. I can tell you, I wasn't here Thursday night, or Tuesday night, tonight's Thursday. I wasn't here Tuesday night. Um, in eleven years, I haven't had a financial statement that kept my interest as much as it did yours. Uh, I love the table of contents. I love, uh, the beginning, the end, the summary, uh, each line item and how it broke down. Uh, I think you did an absolutely fantastic job and I just wanted to say thank you. It flowed great. I understood stuff, uh, more so than I ever have. And, um, I apologize for missing the meeting, um, but thank you. You did a great job, thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you guys.
Anyone else? And get on to what Kristen Jason said. All right, roll call please. Mr. Dackler?
Yes.
And Mrs. Gettler?
Yes.
And Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
And Mr. Dackler?
Yes.
Next we move on to our acceptance of donations. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the following list of donations. All monies will be used through each school's zero, one, eight account unless indicated otherwise. Books and materials valued at one thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars. Books and materials valued at $1,126 from the Bear Primary School PTO to the Bear Primary School Library. Books and materials valued at $3,506 from the Matherview Primary School PTO to the Matherview Primary School Library. $1,000 from the Miami Springs Band Booster Association for Miami Springs Marching Band Staff Siphons. And $200 from the Women of St. John's Lutheran Church for Miami Springs City Schools Community Connection Programs. Do you have a motion?
I'm motioning to accept donations.
A second. So first by Mr. Dachler, and a second by Mrs. Gettner. Any questions or comments?
Besides thank you?
Yeah, always.
We'll buy a lot of books. Nice. All right, roll call, please. Mrs. Gettner?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Anfler?
Yes.
And Mr. Dachler?
Yes.
Next, we go to organizational meeting information. A is recommended that the organizational meeting be held on January 2nd, 2025 at 6:00 PM in the P E room, Board of Education, 54 East Park Avenue, Miami Springs, Ohio. And then B. In order to follow proper procedures, it will be necessary to appoint a president pro temp to preside over the organizational meeting to be held January 2nd, 2025. The president pro temp will be Ann Neese. All right, next we'll move on to our reports. Molly may end up coming, and this is a busy time for her, but we'll go on to our legislative panel. Jason Mallory?
He just stepped away from it.
Okay. Then how about our student achievement, my Christopher Anfler?
Along with our very own Mr. Prince as being the October standard of the month, we also have from other buildings throughout the school district, we have Bauer Primary School of Kenley Crisick, Bear Elementary School, Joe Stanifer, Jane Chance Intermediate School, Claire Shiverdecker, Kinder Intermediate School, Aleah Lindemood, Maddox Lane, Atiya Torres, Mark Twain Primary School, Cooley C. O'Reilly, Matherview Primary School, Noah Tran, Mount Intermediate School, Kenzie Bentley, and Miami Springs Middle School, Jace Shell. So congratulations to all those other students of the month.
Thank you. And then next we have our Montgomery County Drug Free Coalition, my son and I, Gettner.
No report today.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have district nation information from Mr. Dachler.
This month, we have November 14th and 16th, there was 113 high school marching bands from 20 different states converged upon Lucas Oil Stadium in Indianapolis, Indiana for the 2024 Bands of America Grand National Championship. This event is the culmination of a month-long season of Bands of America, regional and super regional events held throughout the country. This year, bands are traveling from as far away as Utah, Washington, and Texas. In past years, bands have traveled from as far as Alaska, Hawaii. All 113 bands performed in a preliminary round. On Thursday and Friday, Miami Springs had a great showing. Congratulations to the Miami Springs Marching Band.
Thank you. Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Will have you do the legislative panel report?
My apologies, I had to take a brief break. There isn't much to report. There is, there is one thing, though, that I'm curious, it was sent to me earlier today, it was an appeal ruling. Katrina, I don't know if you could pass this on. It was a court ruling about, I thought it would interest you because it is about public records and what qualifies as a public record and doesn't. And I'll email you a link to it, but it was between Hicks versus Union Township in Southern Ohio. The slip opinion is 2024-Ohio-5499. And it just listed public distribution, like there was a effort, a public records request to get electronic and mail distribution lists. That was originally declined by the courts, but the appeals court overturned it, the Ohio Supreme Court did. And I'm just kind of interested how that might, you know, affect us, if it does at all in any way, if we distribute newsletters or things like that. And I could send you that if you have any questions about it, but it was just released today. The only other legislative item is Senate Bill 104 that passed the Senate, that's yet to be signed or vetoed by Governor DeWine. And that bill is direct students in public schools to use the bathroom and locker rooms that matches their sex at birth. I really don't have anything else to report other than those two items.
Thank you, Mr. Mallory. We'll go around the table, let's start with our student board reps.
I first want to say thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present about our elementary schools and the findings that we had. I really appreciated my time, and I valued it that I went down there. It was really nice to just talk to some of the younger kids, and just get to know some of them, and hopefully get, make some like familiar faces, and just get to know them and have those connections with the younger students, especially from a high school, that's really valuable to me. And then I wanted to say congrats to Brenda for her retirement. She was so helpful, even coming in, just having a friendly face that first meeting. I'm sure we all remember that, when we sat down with Dr. Blessing. And she was just so helpful, just explained kind of what we were, what to expect, and I just really appreciate her for that. So congratulations, Brenda. Then I also wanted to say, kind of just inform you guys of something that the four of us have been working on or have worked on. We're a part of a represent, a group, kind of, called the Miami Galley Board of Student Board Representative Roundtable, which is basically a ton of other student board reps in the area, and we all get together and we kind of focus on the bill that we want to help pass or help block in the Senate or House of Representatives. And we recently helped to stop, helped block House Bill 445 or amend it, which basically talked about school district policies for released time courses and religious instruction. And it, we kind of sent letters to our district representatives saying that one word from, one word change from may to shall no longer protected the religious exercise. And we got results and responses from a couple of our House Representatives, district representatives that agreed with us. And we kind of just helped protect that religious protective exercise, which I just wanted to share, and I think we can all agree that we think that's important, and we want students to be able to protect the religious freedom and exercise in school. So that's my report.
I did really enjoy this, going down to the elementary schools and surveying the kids. It was great to make some familiar faces. I teach swim lessons, so I know the Saturday after we went to the schools, I saw some kids from Miami Springs, and they're like, hey, why don't you just have a school? And I'm like, yeah. So that was really cool. They thank you to the elementary school principals. This would not have been possible without them. And shout out to Miss Humor, Miss Humor is harmonica. It was, I loved it. And lastly, congratulations to Brenda. I will miss her for sure. I remember when we first started as the board reps, and Dr. Blessing would be talking to us about like our accounts and like everything, and she was like, okay, Brenda's going to do this, Brenda's going to do that, Brenda's going to do that. And we're all like, who's Brenda? Like, we can't wait to meet her. She seems amazing. So congratulations to her on her retirement, and I hope she enjoys it.
Yeah, of course, kind of just go off what Dave said. Congratulations to Brenda. We were not the conditioned student board reps you see before yourself about six months ago. And so before every meeting, a few days in advance, Brenda, Dr. Blessing would be with us at the high school. And it was a great time for us to get to know Dr. Blessing and Brenda. And we got to know Brenda very well, so it's a little sad to see her go, but I know she'll be happy in retirement. Of course, they do all the principals and administrators who made it possible for us to go to their schools and survey their students. I know it was a lot of work for them, and we really appreciate that. Yeah, I thought it was very, I thought it was very cool to receive some responses from some local district representatives. I did my research, and they seemed quite cool people. We meet with the roundtable on December 7th, I think was the next date. So more news to come for that. And thank you for the donations that, or the great donations that the city of Miami Springs and its residents provide to the schools.
So I first want to congratulate Andrew on being student of the month. So many know him as a student, and like you guys know him as a student board rep. But Andrew's a great friend. He's always someone that I can go to for advice. Like when I was making this presentation, I called Andrew. But, so he helped me through that, so can congratulate him. I also want to thank the board for the opportunity to give this presentation, but also the opportunity to go out and be able to meet with those kids. It was a very interesting experience that I'm looking forward to doing again. I also want to congratulate Brenda. We only met with her a few times, but she always had a smile on her face and was very helpful towards us. And I just want to wish everyone sitting here and listening a safe drive home. My first time driving in the snow, so it was a lot, but, but yeah, thank you.
Start slow, stop slow, drive slow.
Bye, it's my dad.
Yeah.
Just be quick, try to be quick. Just thanks to everyone for attending our meetings. Kathy, Mrs. Susan, and Jennifer Popgig, and Michelle, and of course, Sir Popsey. And thanks to Mr. Prees for recording our meeting. I know it's basketball season, but it's meant to be great time for you. Thanking our board reps for the wonderful presentation, and congratulations to Brenda. Congratulations to the staff that were nominated for the Excellence in Education Awards. Congratulations to Andrew, and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Well, I'm just going to start with, I love that you guys love Brenda as much as I love Brenda. So congratulations to Brenda. She's been a rock for me since I walked through the door, so I hope that she enjoys her time, but she also knows how I feel about it.
Yeah.
And just want to take the opportunity to thank all of the board members and the administration for working with me through this first forecast session for Miami Springs. You know, it's been, it's been a quick few months, and we were able to get a lot of things done within the treasurer's office and for the district, and really contextualize the data that you guys are looking at daily so that you can make better decisions for your district. So that's our purpose and our goal. So thank you for being productive with us and for letting us do that for you.
Thank you for the data. I look forward to being able to look at that when we need to, to make decisions. It's going to be useful, it's going to be a good tool. Great presentation, I think, student reps. I'd like to welcome Mr. Munsey to the district. It's a great, great asset that we have been able to welcome aboard. So glad the team worked hard to make that happen. And just want to say, you know, I think everybody works hard. We all work hard here as board members. Sometimes we have a difference of opinions, if we're all here for the same reason, all here for the kids, all want to do what's right for the district, just all have different missions, so. That's all I got. Thank you.
I'll try to be quick. First off, I want to say to you four, thank you for your presentation. That's a lot of hard work. Did a fine job, very interesting. So thank you. Also, Ms. Kathy, thank you for recognizing our staff here at various schools. That's very nice, very much appreciated. And A, thank you for staying.
I was curious.
And B, thank you for providing the recognition that our staff deserves, and that's very nice, so thank you. In 11 years, Steve has seen a lot of people retire, but I can tell you, in 11 years, I've never seen him get as emotional as he did. I think that just goes to show the person that we're losing, and not only central office, but a friend, somebody that cares about the school district, somebody that cares about kids. And even though she will be around the community, because she's not going anywhere, I think it just goes to show what, what one person can have on a community's impact in education. So I congratulate her for her retirement. Anytime you leave on your own terms, that's quite a success story, and I can possibly hopefully do that in 57 days myself. With that, I would say happy Thanksgiving, and I'll pass it on to you. Thanks.
Thanks, bro.
I just want to thank you for also, the board reps, for the presentation. And what I appreciated so much was how you did your due diligence, and you worked with the principals and laid the foundation before you actually did the survey, and then you put all your data together to share with us. You did a great job on that. Also, best wishes to Brenda, and thank her for all her years she's given to our school district and our community. She is truly a diamond. And Andrew, amazing to be the district student of the month. We're very proud of you and proud to have you as part of our team. Congratulations to all the staff who are nominated by the students for an outstanding contribution to the district. And I just want to thank the board for approving the FFA trip. I have a granddaughter that's in FFA through CTC, and that was something that she really was looking forward to.
Well, first, a couple of weeks ago, I got a phone call from our secondary curriculum director, Stacy. And it asked me if I would participate in a career day next Monday at Camp Chicago. And immediately, I was like, sure, I'll do whatever it is you ask me to do. And then I immediately became terrified because I didn't know what to do. So I was excited and chilled, but then I became nervous. But I'm looking forward to it because I'll be able to interact and talk about, you know, my idea over the years that I've learned, you know, with young kids and answer their questions about how to be hopefully successful and work hard in life and do some good things for myself. Second, I want to thank Kathy for your education foundation of excellence. That's really great what you guys do. Thank you so much. Third, I want to thank John McManus as our treasurer for coming down this evening. The detailed report he gives us, I mean, it helped me, helps me as a layman, you know, the tax code and school levies and all that stuff is incredibly complex and hard to understand. The more conversations you can have about that, the better. And last, but most important, I really want to give my most sincere thanks to Jason Osborne, Jason Shade, Steve Homan, and the Munsey family for having the confidence in us as a district to come and work for us in the high school and hopefully take our football program to some great places. My own kids trained with Matt at Renegades and Chelsea. And, you know, over the years, you know, the only word that comes to mind every time I've been around them is just absolutely impressed. And I think it's a huge win for our district for a long time, and I couldn't be happier and appreciate all the effort that went into making that happen at the speed that it did. So with that, I will motion to adjourn. Since I'm the last guy.
Second?
Second. Stole my thunder.
So first by Mr. Mallory, second by Mr. Dachler. 749. Roll call, please. Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Anfler?
Yes.
Mr. Dachler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettner?
Yes.